Good evening and welcome to this special board meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education for Monday, May 8th, 2023. Appropriate notice for this meeting has been advertised. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mrs. Maya?
Here.
Mrs. Zakowski?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Dokus?
Here.
Mrs. Caden?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no executive session at this time, so we will move to Section 3 Presentations. But before we get started with presentations, Dr. McDowell would like to read a short statement.
So, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Buildings and Grounds Department, I'd like to read a few statements in memoriam for the loss of our colleague and friend, Mr. John Wapinski. John joined the Buildings and Grounds Department in December of 2010 as a member of the high school custodial crew. His skills and ability led him to a position with the Maintenance Department in the summer of 2014. As a district painter, John contributed to many successful projects throughout his tenure. Among these were creating and installing exterior signage for our elementary schools, as well as building a soundproof recording booth for the high school digital production studio. A proud veteran, he also restored the World War II memorial name plaques at the entrance of the Irvine Gym. John was a respected and revered member of the Buildings and Grounds team, and his positive outlook and can-do attitude will be sorely missed. In an effort to honor the memory of our friend, the Buildings and Grounds team is taking steps to establish a John T. Wapinski Memorial Scholarship Fund. This award will be presented to a graduating Collingswood High School senior who is pursuing further education or training in a maintenance or construction trade. Cash donations will be accepted by all Building Secretaries, as well as the Buildings and Grounds Department through May 15th. For those that are interested in providing direct support to John's family, we will be sending out links to both Venmo and PayPal tomorrow morning. At this moment, could I ask for just a moment of silence in remembrance of John? Thank you.
Okay, so now we are going to have our 2023-2024 budget presentation given by Dr. McDowell.
Don't like to stand with my back to folks, so please bear with us. So, thank you again for everybody being here. And so, our theme for the upcoming school year is continuing our acceleration. From the beginning of the transition of coming back from the pandemic, we were pretty clear that our transition from COVID, or our acceleration efforts, would be a three-to-five-year endeavor. We are now moving into Year Three. And so, during the budget development process, a high degree of deliberation was taken, and tough, tough choices had to be made. We set out to ensure that we could do a few things. One, is maintain student-facing programs, and two, avoid layoffs to the highest degree possible. In partnership with our district office, the CEA, the CPSA, District Supervisors and Building Administrators, we all helped to scrutinize the proposed 23-24 budget. We actively sought ways to further decrease operational costs and increase savings. We also identified revenue streams and additional grant funding that were used to offset staff reductions that directly affected teaching and learning. During this challenging budgetary process, we are still continuing to make every attempt to maintain as many positions as possible. Alongside our district officials, school, and union leaders, we collectively acknowledge and recognize the difficulty in constructing a budget and the complexity in analyzing and balancing said budget, and we greatly appreciate the time and effort of everyone involved in this particular process. So, when we think about our mission and vision, our mission and vision is unchanged. As a school system, our focus is to make sure that we have an inclusive and supportive environment that inspires and empowers every student, while fostering the qualities necessary in our students so that they are viable contributors in a socially just world. From a school district perspective, what's the responsibility of the school district? As a system of schools, first and foremost is to analyze current systems and to remove barriers, to move from being compliance-driven to capability or capacity-driven, with a single-minded focus on school improvement. Reframing mandated curriculum is opportunities to support effective teaching. Commit to supporting strong leaders, and then also commit to supporting and retaining dedicated faculty and staff.
All right, I get the numbers. So, on screen now, on the screen is our projected enrollment for 23-24, and you can see overall we're projecting an increase of 29 children, but that's in total for all of Collingswood. The biggest increase is in preschool, which is why we got the, an increase in preschool aid this year, and also in elementary. We're seeing a decrease of 51 children in middle school, and then another uptick in high school for a net of a positive 29 kids going into next school year. All right, district revenue. So, fund balance is basically your savings account, just the amount of money I save from year to year that I can put back into the budget to help pay for things. So, that's $1,136,824, so just shy of 3%, 3% of our revenue is fund balance. $18,171,409, that's tax levy, so that's the 2% that we're allowed to ask the taxpayers for. I will note that it's 46%. So, you'll notice like the state portion that we get, our state aid, is shrinking, and I'll get to that in a second. So, tuition, we do receive a lot of special ed children from neighboring districts. We also have Oakland and Woodland, so tuition, $7.5 million, so that's about 19.33%. Reserve withdrawal, that is a capital reserve withdrawal to do some capital projects. We also submitted to the Department of Ed Rod grants, so this would be our local share with the state picking up the rest. And then, activity fees, about $46,000. State aid, $11,171,557, that's about 28%. So, of every dollar that we spend, 28 cents is from the state of New Jersey. The rest, we're generating locally. And semi-Medicaid, that's a mandatory state program that we have to participate in, that's, you know, way less than 1%. And the miscellaneous is about $459,000, and that's monies that we get through our shared services. We charge other school districts for our maintenance services. It's our interest, and we get, sometimes with our GIPS, our joint insurance funds, we do get sizable refunds if we have a good year claim-wise, and it's the money we get for the rentals when building, when people come in and they use our facilities. So, that's the money we generate from that. And if you're like, if you're like me, you're like Dr. McDowell, you like pictures, this is just the same information I just gave you, but it, you know, just broken out, so you can see that the local taxes support less than half percent of the budget. Tuition is another big portion, and state's about 28%. So, we manage this district budget with mostly local funds. Local meaning taxpayers, tuition, and shared service income, and just doing things with other districts to bring money back into Collingswood. District expenditures. So, instruction, and in this line item, I would, I included everything, so all staff staff, excuse me, staff salaries and benefits, student activities, athletics, special ed supplies, everything that goes into the classroom or affects a child instruction-wise, that's $24,652,954, or just shy of 63% of this budget. Student services in that category is transportation, school counselors, nurses, child study team, the OTPT, our security staff, that's $6,133,545, so just shy of 16%. Facilities, that is our maintenance, our Buildings and Grounds, that is gas, that is electric, and all of our capital work, just shy of 13%. And administrative, so that's the board office, that's each school main office, those are all the costs associated with those offices, that's $3,382,460, for just shy of 9%. And again, just a pie chart if you are a visual learner like myself. And then, the year-over-year comparison for the tax levy. So, last year, our tax levy was $17,815,08, this year, $18,171,409, for a difference of $356,301. So, when people say its tax levy's 2%, that's what we can ask for, that's the maximum amount of money I can bring in on the largest piece of our revenue. Just if you go back to the pie chart, the largest piece of our revenue can only go up 2%, and that's $356,000. And for the average household assessment of $232,600 in Collingswood, it's $81 per home for next school year.
So, thank you, Beth Anne. So, what does this, what do all these numbers mean? So, all these numbers means that we're going to be able to continue providing the level of support that we currently have, and so, we had a few budget priorities that we wanted to highlight for this year. One is supporting learning acceleration Year Three, ensuring that we meet the needs of every learner through the lens of equity, so being able to maintain our learning acceleration specialists to provide small group instruction in all of our elementary schools. This is where classroom intervention takes place. Data team supports for schools, and so, we are continuing to refine our efforts and tools in order to make sure that we're using data to help better inform instruction. And then, also, we're going to be adding an additional lens around professional development through coaching for equity among our school and site-based leaders. We're also going to continue to refine and reinforce our school support model, really around academics, culture, and mental health. SEL implementation to varying degrees, Year Three in elementary, Year Two in middle school, and a full Year One at the high school level. This is where we are coming together with common language, common resources, in order to boost culture on our campuses, and we're going to be expanding our efforts in restorative justice and positive behavior support across all schools. In addition to supporting teacher collaboration with the expansion of professional learning communities, in order to build collective teacher efficacy, we believe that when our educators have the opportunity to come together and plan, they're able to better meet the needs of our students, and we want to give them the time and the resources to do so. Our second priority is to continue enhancing and providing targeted support to our infrastructure. For one, we will be expanding one additional preschool classroom, increasing 15 more students in Collingswood will be able to take advantage of all-day, high-quality preschool. Our goal is to build capacity so that every family that lives in Collingswood is able to take advantage of this extremely valuable resource. Our long-range facility plans, the Good Shepherd is part of our long-range facility plans, and so, we will be continuing to honor our agreement with the Camden Diocese, and we will be shifting some resources and some staff into that facility while we build capacity for a long-term funding campaign in order to free up additional space in some of our buildings, to return space back to our students. In addition to making sure that we provide the necessary improvements in technology services, which has been an area of challenge this year, we currently, between Collingswood and Oakland, we provide technical support to 3,100 people, and in this type of environment where you have a one-to-one computing environment, it's important for you to make continued investments in technology, not just the devices, but also technical assistance and ongoing support, as well as the new areas in technology around cybersecurity and data protection of students' and staff information. In addition to, we will be updating and presenting a many communications plan next month to our Board of Education, which will also encompass improved communication across schools, as well as across the district, which will include website, as well as social media presence, in addition to continuing to provide resources and support around our Safe Schools partnership with the Borough of Collingswood. And so, when we think about a budget, a budget is not just simply a spreadsheet, it's not just numbers on a page, it's people, it's experiences, it's expectations, it's levels of support that we need within our schools. And so, but we also acknowledge that a budget has to be fiscally responsible, and so, some of the cost-saving measures that we are continuing to employ are external relationship management. And so, one of the things that we've been able to do over the last 18 months is we've been able to go out and bring in additional revenues to the tune of about $2.5 million in external grants. We're currently in the process to bring in about $4 million of additional grants, because part of our responsibility is to provide additional opportunities, to provide additional resources to our students. And so, this is going to continue to be an area of growth for us. Beth Anne referenced earlier that we greatly benefit from participating in insurance funds. Because we participated in joint insurance funds this year, we saw a net increase in our premiums by 4.9% when the state healthcare plan was 15. And so, there was a direct benefit. Above and beyond that, we also received a dividend payment which helped to offset some of our budget. And so, by participating in this insurance fund, we're actually able to keep more educators in the classroom, and we're able to maintain our slate of programming. Utilities, we also participate in a utility consortium, because we don't want to overpay for energy, and so, there's always cost savings associated with that, in addition to cooperative purchasing. And so, when you buy in bulk and when you participate in group purchasing, you pay a lower cost for the same level of service. We also benefit from our shared service agreement between Collingswood and Oakland, in addition to the Borough in the areas of administration, business services, child study teams, safety, technology, custodial, and the like, and we're seeking additional shared service agreements with several other districts in order to generate more revenue to go back into our classrooms. We also leverage the utilization of our district bus, which reduces the cost for class trips, as well as our vocational technical program, in addition to a partnership of trash removal with the Oakland Public Works, as well as our continued investment through the utilization of the preschool expansion grant of high-quality preschool. The data is pretty clear, is that in environments where preschool is available, there is a significant return of investment to the local economy. And so, as shared at the beginning of this presentation, we want to make sure that every family that lives in Collingswood has an opportunity to participate in high-quality preschool, and so, we will continue to make steps until we actually are able to achieve that capacity. And that concludes our formal presentation to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Okay, so we wanted to give the Board an opportunity to discuss this, I'm seeing spots, and a few other things, so going right from the presentation, can I have a motion to enter committee of the whole?
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, to start with, you know, we just heard that budget presentation, I wanted to open it up for Board members if they had clarifying questions, concerns, to take the opportunity to ask that now.
I have a question about the grant, the plans to expand grant applications. Obviously, grants have done amazing things for our district, most recently the Wellness Room, but you're looking, I'm sorry, the $4 million, that's what you're hoping to get in the future, or is that, is that number what we currently have achieved?
Well, what we've currently secured so far is 2.5 million with the ability to renew for an additional $2 million, and so, some of the grants, you get an initial award, and then provided you hit all of your goals and targets, you get extended. And so, we have the ability, I believe, with our current grants that are in the queue for an additional $1.8 million, provided we adhere to the goals and objectives of existing approved grants already. We have about $4 million in the queue, we will start hearing about those in the coming, in the coming weeks.
Thank you. The follow-up question I had was, so say a grant is for a certain amount of time, when we spend that money and initiate those programs, when that grant concludes, with the budgetary challenges that we've had this year, and unfortunately, things look like they will continue to be unstable economically, you know, all over the place, where would the money come from to continue those programs if the, if the grant is not renewed?
So, as a general rule, when you're using soft dollars or grant funds, you try, unless that's the component of the grant, you try to focus on one-time expenditures, you try not to create ongoing reoccurring expenditures. And so, many grants often frown upon creating staff positions because of that very issue, and so, they really focus on infrastructure, but other grants focus on a short period of time for an intended purpose. And so, one of the things that we will continually have to do every year is to assess where our needs are, and then identify the resources to be able to maintain the programs and services that we are finding valuable, and then to make different decisions for programs that are either expiring or no longer relevant to our current context.
Just to clarify, so, for example, the Wellness Room, that did include staff, so what would be the contingency plan for staffing challenges if any of those staff-involved grants might go away?
So, currently with the Wellness Program, provided we adhere to our goals and objectives, we are looking at about a four-year grant investment. The goal will be over the next four years is to build capacity within our budget to be able to maintain services. Services are going to evolve, it's very difficult to determine what the needs of our secondary students will be four years from now, but we know that in the immediate, there is great need. And so, part of our responsibility will be to work collectively as a board, as a school community, to identify what we believe long-term needs will be, and then work to identify how we're going to continue with those services. What that may look like is something very similar to what we saw to support counseling services for elementary several years ago.
I know that a lot of work and a lot of collaboration is going into this process, and I think as a board, we've heard about this, I think, I mean, really starting back in earnest in the fall, but for some that maybe aren't here, maybe just a brief, I think it was intentional that we wanted this to feel different and more inclusive than it had in the past, and any, anything that you could give in terms of, I know that it's, it's difficult, we had constraints, and there's things that we had to work in, but around the collaboration and the efforts to ensure that voices were heard, anything you could speak to on that would be.
So, this, this current year was extremely, was extremely challenging, and we had to make some extremely tough decisions, and so, we are very thankful and fortunate to have leaders both in classrooms, in our buildings, in the district offices, that all worked really well together, even when we weren't in agreement about how to move forward. And so, the lens in which we can, we all continue to operate was how do we make sure that we're able to maintain our programs and services, which is why families come to us, and to the highest degree possible, avoid crippling layoffs like we see in some of our other places. And so, historically, what we have utilized are cost-saving measures that allow us to maintain consistent levels of service, and then looking at attrition as an opportunity. And so, we painstakingly started with a multi-million-dollar budget deficit, and so, I think it's important to kind of frame, how did we get to the deficit in Collingswood? The simple answer is the cost to educate our students in an inclusive environment simply costs more. Transportation costs more, service contracts cost more, tuition costs more, so everything simply costs more. And it's not that there is an inability to pay, there is an inability to legally ask. And so, time and time again, our residents, our neighbors, our school community, when there was a need, we've gone to the community, and the community has approved our ability to be able to rise to meet that need. This year, we did not have the ability to do that. And so, when we think about what we had the ability to, to ask for, was we had the ability to ask for 2%. 2% is $356,000, that covers practically, that is a minimal cost of the increase in the inflationary cost that we are experiencing. And so, a long-term solution will be needed between our school district, our Board of Education, our school and district leaders, in order to make sure that we're not in the same place this time next year, when we know, to Megan's point, that there are a multitude of positions that were grant-funded that will be expiring next year and the year after. And so, the fiscal cliff, all districts in the country who accepted federal dollars over the last three to four years will be experiencing a same fiscal cliff, and it is incumbent upon us as a school community to work collaboratively to address so that we're not seeing, we're not having a, another deep-level reduction like we're seeing this year. And so, in terms of what we're happy about is, we're happy about the collaboration. It took a series of sessions and lots and lots of discussion, and in some cases, we had to go line by line, because we were all seeking every possible dollar needed in order to be able to do those two things, which is maintain our program of services while also maintaining our staff. And so, there were tough decisions that we had to make this year, but we feel confident that moving into September, we will be able to deliver a quality of service consistent with the expectations of our school community.
Can I ask a specific question related to the budget? Is that okay? Yeah. So, there's a lot of line items in here that are called purchased professional educational services, and several of them that I can see significantly jump from what is the revised budget of '22-23 to the actual proposed budget, like pretty significant jumps, so I'm just curious, what, what's looped into that category?
Those would be the instructional assistants. I budget them by the special ed category or function that they're in, so they're probably, you probably see that in three or four different account numbers throughout the district, depending on like where they're serving. We did budget an increase for the instructional assistants, and we have, at last count, 77 special ed instructional assistants in the district, that's why you see that huge spike. That's what that is. They are outsourced, so it's a purchase professional service, not a salary line.
If we hire any consulting firms, you know, in the budget, where would I, where would we find those items?
The, well, the first would be the RFPs would be approved, we're approving them next month, so the professional services, so like Garrison, the attorney, the auditor, they're all going to be put before the Board at the end of May. The RFPs just went out. So, I can give you the line, it's in, it's in the administrative line under purchased professional services, under admin, but we did go out to RFP, and the RFPs have been received in the But we did go out to RFP, and the RFPs have been received in the board office, so they'll be on the May twenty-second agenda. Yes. Yeah, we are required by law to have an attorney. We have to have an auditor. With all the work that's going on with the rod grants that we put in to fix the structural problems here, we needed an architect as well.
So, you know, all of us have seen this budget. We, we had, we had committee meetings last week, and went into this budget in more detail. So, I don't have a lot of specific questions about it. The one that, thing that I saw this time that I, I was curious about, what is the, do we have an understanding of what the reasoning for the significant dip in enrollment in the middle school is? Because that was, the rest of them, not as significant of a change, and then losing fifty-one students is not an insignificant number. Do we know why?
I actually, I don't, what I do is I take the October ASSA. I roll everybody up a grade, and then I look at the projections, because the DOE has, I guess, our enrollment from the beginning of time, and they give us a range, a projection range. So, I kind of use the DOE's projection range. So, I don't know if the number of fifth graders going into sixth is dropping off, or, or what. Like, you see, you know, you can tell where there's bubbles, right? Like, you can see that first grade is blowing up, because that's all the preschoolers coming into kindergarten in first grade. So, something between middle, and then again in high, there's, there's something there, so we need to look into that. But I basically take the number of kids that are enrolling in October, and then I look to see who's still here when I do the budget, to do the, the numbers that you saw up there, based on the, the trending that the DOE has us at. So, that's why we didn't see a huge amount of state aid this year, lovely forty-nine thousand dollars. We're not losing a lot of children, not that fifty-one kids isn't a lot, but, you know, we serve, between all the, all three districts, we serve probably just under twenty-three-hundred children. So, to the DOE, it's not a, it's not a large enough number to give us additional state aid. We're a smaller district, you know, that would be sizable. So, we didn't see a lot of state aid, because our enrollments, for lack of another word, were almost flat enrollment-wise. Even though fifty seems like a lot, but when you look at, like, almost three thousand kids that we service, the DOE doesn't see it as significant, so.
And also, just to, to clarify one more time, so, the, there have been, there's really no change in, in programming for students at, at any level? Is that correct for next year?
So, the only program that will be expiring is our foods or home economics program. Every other program will remain.
Dr. McDowell, you said in the beginning of your presentation that attracting and, more importantly, keeping qualified and diverse staff is a very important part of your, of your vision. Considering the number of, not only staff retirements that we've had this year, but also staff resignations, particularly, you know, people who have been with the district for years, but are leaving to go to other districts, can you let us know what, more specifically, what your plans are for retaining and supporting staff?
So, this is an area that we have to work on. And so, I think that it's, it's important to, to kind of frame when transitions happen. And so, the loss of any staff member, for whatever reason, is not something that we welcome, but it is pretty consistent with what the industry is being faced with now. And so, when we look at a ten to twelve percent transition rate for, over a year, over a year, that's, that's an average range. When you add departures, resignations, and retirements, one of the things that we have done this year is we have been conducting exit interviews with key staff in order to help inform our planning. And so, we don't have a, a, a formal plan currently, but we are taking that feedback, and we're going to be using that moving forward in our planning process about how do we retain our staff? How do we successfully increase positive school culture across all campuses? How does it actually, how does it reflect in our recruitment strategy? And then who do we partner with in order to help support all of that work?
Why, why are we not doing exit interviews with all of the staff that are resigning, retiring, and just the key staff members? Or are you doing them with everybody?
And so, we're, we're building capacity. That's not something that we traditionally did. It's something that we started doing this year, and we're, we're, we're learning and we're refining. And so, one of the things that we're also looking to do is actually, not just the face-to-face, but we're looking to create a survey or data collection instrument for all folks who are leaving us, and that'll be done through our personnel department. And so, that's in the queue, so that we get more voices in those conversations.
On, on that track, are we, can, can we talk about maybe possibly doing a, a current staff survey for everybody that's there or existing?
That's, that's also in the plan.
Dr. McDowell, you, you mentioned the need for long-term, long-term plans for, to try to, try to keep this from happening again. And Ms. Coleman, it does, as you've said, it, it doesn't look like the state is going to be giving us, you know, a huge bump in funding anytime soon. So, considering that the state aid, would you call that flat, I guess? Is that the term for it, or?
Basically, it's flat.
And if students are, you know, leaving the, if students are leaving the district, that will also affect state aid negatively as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, considering that the state aid doesn't seem to be going anywhere, and transportation costs continue to be astronomical for a variety of reasons, and services and everything, what are some plans, when you, when you say long-term plans, what, what does that look like? Just in terms of how, how are we going to change our spending so that programs are not affected, staffing is not affected, but at the same time, we can try to, we can try to anticipate this issue coming again for next year?
I'm going to try to explain this. So, we've mentioned a couple times tonight, we didn't have the ability to ask to go above two percent. We all know there's two percent property tax cap. You're allowed to exceed the two percent within your budget if you have certain exceptions. The first would be a large increase in enrollment. It would trigger an enrollment adjustment. We didn't have that. The second would be if our healthcare costs exceeded the state plan. It didn't, because we came in at four point nine, the state plan came in over fifteen. So, the automatic adjustments within the budget software itself didn't apply to us. So, we didn't have the ability to say to the taxpayers, hey, because this cost is so high, or we have so many more kids, you need a local fair share to help contribute, we just, those options are not available to us. But there is an option going forward that we're talking about preliminarily with Dr. McDowell and the finance committee, is we can put a separate question on, on the budget next year. But there are parameters with the second question that we need to vet with the county office. For example, it can't be something that currently exists in our schools, the caveat being in the general fund. So, if it's a, a grant, let's say it's an ESER grant position, I believe, and the county office could probably argue with me, and I could probably argue back very strongly, my opinion, but I believe those are in play, right? Because they didn't exist. They're grant-funded, they're brand-new, brand-new programming. The other caveat with asking for something on a separate proposal would be, it can't, it's got to be non-TNE. So, try to get the Department of Ed to explain a thorough and efficient education of what's, what they consider TNE and not TNE. That's difficult. But basically, they're going to look at it, like, if it's something that's already in your schools, and you need it to run your buildings and teach children, they're going to say no to. But I still kind of lean towards some of those grant things that we're doing in ESER. We didn't have them before. They weren't required to be in the schools, but there's a great value to them. So, I think as we move forward, we're probably, Dr. McDowell and I, probably going to be talking to the CEA, I think we're going to try to put something together to fight, to put that separate question, so that those programs that are in the ESER, since currently in the ESER grant, being funded that way, they're proven very valuable at our schools, and I'm pretty certain the board's going to want to retain them beyond the expiration of the ESER grant. So, that's kind of what I'm playing with, is to putting, putting something out. And then what happens is, kind of like we did it back in two thousand and, ooh, I want to say eighteen, nineteen, when we passed the mental health separate question, the funds would come into the budget in the middle of the year. So, if approved, they would come in, like, January, and then they would stay in the budget. They would just be part of our base budget going forward. But that's something I'm, I'm considering, it's just we have to get the county office on board, because it would have to be approved by them first. You're welcome.
Any other budget-related questions from board members? Okay, the other thing on our, on our agenda to discuss during committee of the whole is just a brief update about an ad hoc committee that was created to, to move the shared service agreement with the Borough Police Department forward. I believe that I have spoken to everyone who had expressed interest in being a part of that ad hoc committee, though that work really will be happening most in the next couple of weeks, to work collaboratively with Chief Carey, to create a job description that we are all, that we all feel represents the agreement that we were comfortable entering into, which is a position that is not a student-facing position. And then, and then, once that job description has been created, then our, our part in it is done for the time being, because then the Chief Carey needs to, to take that information and go find a, a person to, to fill that job. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions about kind of next steps with that. There hasn't been a lot of movement in this past week since we were last here, but that was on our list to discuss as well. Okay. We, we did talk about it over committee meetings, so just wanted to, to make sure. With that, can I get a motion to exit committee of the whole?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor? Okay, moving on to section five, which is our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the, the community, excuse me, the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes, so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict five-minute time limit per person during public comment. Mr. Craig will give you a thirty-second warning. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you can come stand at the microphone at this time.
Good evening. My name is Rick Pence. I am the president of the Collingswood Education Association. Two weeks ago, I asked you to invest in the staff who invest their lives into the education of the Collingswood Public Schools. I thanked the administration for being a part of this budget process. Advocating for our members in the right way to save as many jobs as possible. I say save as many jobs as possible. Budget process started back in February for myself, for myself, and my leadership team. During this process, association advocated for operational costs to be decreased, but that means it's about fourteen percent of your budget. That means it's probably about half of that is cost you can't touch, talking about seven percent, just to help save jobs for this staff. As part of this process, every anticipated vacancy that was going to happen, or we heard of during this process, we discussed about not being replaced. Every one of these is at secondary campus. You could proximally look at, at least ten positions that are not going to be replaced. Yes, only one program is, we're losing, and we've been talking about that for two years. Think it was about the same time last year, when we had person after person after person coming up here to save jobs. Second year of the process for this, we're back here again. This secondary campus, who we believe, I believe we all believe, has a culture and climate issue that we have to solve. We are now decreasing by at least ten people. And I'll sit here and tell you now, there are more resignations on this agenda tonight that weren't discussed. And I'll tell you tonight, there's more coming. In today's society, where people are not going into education, we are having trouble finding people to come work in education, that we need to figure out as a board on how to fund this. Because I challenge every single one of you, because I'll tell you right now, two years of being involved in this process, one hundred percent sure, we're going to be back here again next year, and you're going to be talking about more people that are decreased. In two years, in two years, primarily from the high school, not even the middle school, you're talking over thirty people transferred out of the building, retired, or resigned. And, you know, you used to hear, your first couple of years here, they looked for other jobs elsewhere, so be it, they left. These are people that have ten, fifteen, twenty-five years of experience, dedicated their life to the Borough of Collingswood. Yes, they are all getting excellent jobs. They are getting more money. I can tell you that one hundred percent sure, just by the conversations I have through it always. But they never, ever, ever wanted to look for a job elsewhere. This was the place they wanted to work. I sit here today, and I challenge you, find the money, not in grants. All the value we put in all these ESER grants in the last three years, I don't have a crystal ball to go backwards. I wish I did. I wish I was yelling and screaming, don't hire staff on these grants. But you got enough people in this district that are all under these grants. It affects secondary level today, it's hitting elementary schools next year. You need to think about this. You need to plan, starting today, for what's going to happen. Because I will tell you, there is no place for any more reductions from the high, high school or middle school at this point in time. And when you sit up here in the fall getting your reports on numbers, I will tell you right now, in the areas that you're affected in are areas of teachers that are not being hired. Say once again, invest in the educators that have invested their lives to the Borough of Collingswood. Thank you.
Yeah, tough act to follow. But Wayne Rossi, 114 D. S. Palmer Ave. So, again, speaking on the school liaison officer, I think if you followed the coverage in the retrospect, the first thing I want to say is I think if the goal of the board is, and I believe that it is, that it, this is not a student-facing position, that it would behoove the board to make a state, a public statement with regard to this, because I, I think that this is not being communicated, and I'm not seeing it in the public discussion over this officer. I, I think that it's important, in part because I, I hear Mrs. Kayden say, you know, that after the job description is created, it's kind of not in the board's hands anymore. And that, that's really what worries me in this, the question of whether, you know, there's really alignment down the line with everyone on this being primarily a support position, as I, I've heard it outlined, on this primarily being a, a position between the administrators and the police, as, as again, I've heard it outlined, whether this is a position that also, you know, I, I, I think during the discussion, the last time, I remember hearing that it was someone who would look also at, alter- who would look also at alternatives to police services when other services are necessary. And I really think it's important that that ball not get dropped once someone's hired. Because I do think that, you know, given everything we've seen and given all the advancement and all the discussion about equity and all the discussion about restorative justice, you know, then to turn around and say, "Yeah, we're just going to have, you know, a police officer with a gun walking around the high school," you know, which is what people are hearing, you know, I believe, that that would be a step backward and a step that we don't necessarily want to take. So, I would like, I would appreciate hearing more, either from board members or from Dr. McDowell, as this, as this position is sort of put forward. But I also want to stress that I think that oversight and continued attention to what this is and what is being created, that it follows sort of this idea, and that mission creep doesn't become, you know, that this is a school resource officer. Because I think that that is a very possible outcome of this if things aren't, if this process doesn't go through right and doesn't have enough board oversight. I believe, you know, I know a lot of you, I think that everyone on the board is very committed to the racial justice aspects of this. And I just want to make sure that it's kept front and center both now as this is happening and once it's there and a fact in the school. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Sue Ellen Raby. I have no children in the district. I moved here three years ago. I'm a retired teacher from California. I want to ditto what the union member said, and if we're not able to keep tenured teachers and we're hiring new staff or whatever, you're dealing with our property values. You've got to make keeping qualified tenured teachers your number-one priority.
Hello. I'm Flora Wetzvales, and I'm on 728 Belmont Ave. Before I get to the main issue, I wanted to discuss, as a quick side note, in the budget plans, you spoke of buying another school. Personally, I'm not a money expert, but I feel like if you're struggling to staff the schools as of right now, we should wait on investing in another school beforehand. That's just a side note. What I'm really here to talk about is that the last time I was at a board meeting, I and many other students were actually speaking up about hiring an armed garden school. So, when we read the April 28th retrospect and saw that you guys went and decided to hire one anyways, we were all immensely disappointed in you. So many things are wrong here. First of all, did no one listen to what we stated the last time? We've already discussed that armed guards cannot prevent violence. They can only punish students after the fights have already occurred. Furthermore, hiring more guards will only stress the already stretched thin school budget even further. And not only that, but this is an armed guard. We're talking about someone with a gun. With the current state of our country, no one in this school will feel comfortable knowing there is someone with a gun inside the school, even if they are a trained officer. And that's not even talking about the fact that if you are here to deal with students, you don't even need a gun to begin with. What do you think we're going to do? Am I going to stab you with a pencil? All right. Yes, I understand school fights can be scary, but that does not mean the equivalent of an armed police officer should walk in and possibly use his weapon. Instead of investing $65,000 on somebody that will only do more harm than good, we should focus on actually supporting and improving our school as-is. There is so many more productive uses of our taxpayer dollars. For one, I constantly overhear teachers talking about how they are in need of supplies. We're talking basic necessities, staples, paper, working printers, dry erase markers. Teachers have to spend money out of their own pocket to get those necessities. Not only that, but as of right now, we only have two school nurses to take care of several hundred students, since the third resigned due to also your mistreatment of workers. By mistreatment, I mean the unhealthy work environment, nothing like serious. Okay? And third, if you have the money to hire another guard, you most definitely have the money to hire necessary teachers. We've already lost the entire Latin course because for some reason you guys couldn't hire another Latin teacher, and now we're on the verge of losing Spanish class as well since all of our current Spanish teachers are either resigning or retiring. Okay? Overall, the questionable use of taxpayer dollars, coupled with the complete distrust you obviously have in students by feeling the need to use intimidation, leads many of us to believe that this school board is not acknowledging the present situation and is instead actively making it worse. If all of the changes you have in mind take place, the likelihood of students getting physically harmed will only rise. Because if you hire somebody with a gun to be in school, you obviously expect him to use it.
Hello, my name is Maggie Janiewski, 258 Woodlawn Avenue. One of the goals stated in the presentation was staff retention, but later it was stated that we have no plan at this point. We've lost over 50 staff members in the last year. How many more teachers do we have to lose before a plan is developed? I've had minimum wage jobs in high school and college that suggested exit interview before my departure, but yet we still aren't conducting them on a regular basis. What are we waiting for? More staff to leave, more students to leave? If a goal is presented, a plan needs to be presented. It's a pretty basic concept of any business, and it's very disappointing that this is something that hasn't been implemented.
Hello, I am Trey Ramsburg. I'm a Collingswood High School student. I live at 32 East Culture Avenue, apartment two. I had a thousand words to read to you, but I figured it would just be best to tell you what I'm feeling. On the 23rd of January this year, I spoke to you among some of my fellow students about our concerns at the possibility of hiring a school resource officer. And I would like to reassert these concerns as they relate to the possibility of an armed school liaison officer. One of the biggest problems with it is that it intuitively doesn't make sense to try to de-escalate conflict by putting an armed gunman into a violent situation such as the fights that this is supposed to make better. For example, I myself am a teenager at this high school, and I'm telling you now that if I were violently angry, the last thing that would calm me down, no matter how nice or understanding the person was, would be somebody with a gun on their hip. When you put a police officer in the building, whether it's just for a more bureaucratic role to make the transition and communication between the high school and the police easier, or if it's really just to police the students, you tell us that it is reasonable to suspect us of such violent criminal behavior as to warrant a police officer with a gun being in the building. Furthermore, school already, in so many ways, acts as a gateway into the prison system. Sociologists call this phenomenon the school-to-prison pipeline, in which misbehaving students are punished with detention or suspensions or expulsion, and these acts, many times over, increase the likelihood of dropping out, which many times over increases the likelihood of being incarcerated. Now, this process mostly, and like many times over disproportionately affects Black, Latino, and LGBT students, who are already more likely to be involved in fights, who are already more likely to have terrible harsh consequences from interactions with the police. So, when we put the police in the building, it's not to handle the situations themselves, it's not so much a gateway or a pipeline anymore. It's just a straight valve. These are the people that are supposed to be protected by the police officer, who are supposed to be, because they're the ones who are most affected by these fights statistically. So, why are we just putting a man with a gun in the situation when, if we have the money, we can certainly invest in security so teachers don't have to break up fights anymore, or in mental health resources, or instituting a peer mediation program so people can work out their differences or learn conflict resolution, instead of just putting a Band-Aid bureaucratic solution onto a very complicated problem to give us a cheap sense of security and safety? I'm going to tell you as a high school student that the last thing that would make me feel safe in a place that is so often so violent and chaotic for me is knowing that somebody's there with a gun who thinks he might have to fire it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Muller. I am coming up as a resident of Collingswood at 509 Dwight. I also happen to teach here as well, and this is a future Panther, right here, Luke, who's currently at the Oakland School. There is, every month I come here, I think of things to say, and then I hear everybody, and I get choked up. And I think we're at the point where the people who care are all here, and there's a lot more watching at home. Because when you think about the work-life balance that the teachers have to give, we give so much throughout what we do. And what's happening right now, I think there's a lot of ideas that are, want to be put into place, but really, we need to be looking at the people who are doing the work. We bring in a lot of other resources, and we forget to invest in the resources that are already here. There is no other profession that is so completely dependent on the public financing. And I understand that so much of this is systematic, and we can't change those things. However, to feel respected in a building, to know that your voice is being heard, to know that what we're doing each day matters, I think, you know, there's a lot of words, and it sounds fluffy, and I tried to find, you know, the research base and everything that's out there. But I find that everybody has great ideas, and then when it's time for things to happen, it feels like nobody wants to make that decision. And the only thing that's happening now are cuts. When if we were being more proactive in the things to get done, things that were talked about in November still are being left without answers. And that's the thing that's frustrating, and hearing my colleagues that are choosing to leave, it's not because they don't love it here. It's quite the opposite. And that's troubling to me, because they care, but they're getting burnt out, because it's almost impossible to do it all, to come here at night, make sure it's happening, research, you know, the best practices. The leadership is not always right here. It's out there too. And our teachers are begging to just be heard and to not feel like they have to leave. There's so much more that I, you know, I feel sometimes like this isn't our forum to speak, and I wanted to address that, because I think that shouldn't be. I feel like teachers should have the place to talk to their board. And, but, the truth is, we have other things to do. And I know we all do. So, as a community member and as a person here who really wants to see things improve, I hope we can continue conversations that go more than from the conversation, but to action. Thank you.
Good evening. Jack McMullin, Collingswood resident, middle school principal, president of the Collingswood and Principal Supervisors Association. I just want to publicly state that our association stands with the CEA regarding budget concerns. To that end, we authored a joint statement to the Central Administration and the Board of Education that outlined our concerns regarding the budget. Not filling or selectively filling vacant teaching and administrative positions is not sustainable. It is not a sustainable formula for balancing a budget. It will impact working conditions. It will impact our ability to retain and recruit teachers and administrators. And it will impact student learning. We would urge Central Administration and the Board of Education to invest in the future of our community and proactively address the concerns that have been raised in our joint statement and the concerns that we've heard this evening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a resident of Collingswood. I live on 550 Grant Avenue. I'm a grandparent. I never had any children go here, but grandkids are going here now, and I love what the schools are doing.
Sorry, could you just give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say that. Lucille Z. Young, 550 Grant Avenue. So, I see a lot of kids coming and going from the high school, heading home and going in the morning, and they're all great kids. I mean, I've never had a problem with any of the kids. They're waving, they're nice, they've helped me with groceries, they helped me with snow, you know, they're just all great kids. I have just a couple statements. The first thing is, it seems like, you know, Dr. McDonald said we made some tough, hard decisions. That kind of doesn't add up to 50 teachers or 50 staff members lost, tough and hard is one thing. But to lose 50 staff members, and also, there was a comment about one program being lost, Home Economics, and then you hear here that, "Well, we no longer have Latin, and we're going to be losing Spanish." One of the things I think that makes Collingswood the great city and the great area that it is, is the schools have been phenomenal. They offer so much. They offer art, they offer music, they offer language, they offer travel, they offer the world. And we keep on bringing it in smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. So, that's the one thing. Another thing, I understand that 2% thing. I've been living here a long time. I saw when it happened, but, and I also understand that there, you have to beg to get your money. I get that. I know what that budget's all about. One of the things that's very unique to New Jersey, and maybe this is one of those times where we have to figure out how to change this, is we have these crazy pilot programs. And in the past, they may have been great, but with all of the changes and the hardships that the schools and the budgets are going through, maybe we need to reconsider that. Maybe we need to invest more in the student bodies and the teachers and their programs than the development that's not really doing anything for the community. We're a great community. We have restaurants everywhere, we have everything in need, but we also need good schools. We need students who are going to be leaving Collingswood, and they're going to call this their home base, and people are going to be proud to say, "I came from Collingswood." Thank you so much. Just a neighbor.
Clinton Connor, 609 Woodlawn Avenue. I had a lot to say about my concerns about this agreement that was signed two weeks ago. I have a lot of concerns about the vague language, the opportunity for this role to expand because of the vague language from an SLO. expand because of the vague language from an SLO to an SRO. But right now, I just kind of really wanted to focus on the budgetary aspect of this. Essentially, what I'm hearing is that there's essentially a budget crisis in the district. We were talking about that years ago with Dr. Oswald, that eventually expenses and our ability to make increases was going to hit a cliff. But then we're agreeing to spend $70,000, $65,000 a year on a school liaison that the borough is already legally required to pay for and provide. So I would urge the district to cancel the agreement, partner with the union, go over to the borough, and say, "You sign an agreement every single year to provide a school liaison officer who is trained to work with youth, who's supposed to be partnering with the districts, supposed to be partnering with other law enforcement agencies, and provide the service they're already legally bound to pay." So that is my urging right now. Like I said, I have a lot of other concerns, but at minimum, if the district believes, and the unions believe, and everybody believes, that the school liaison officer is an important part, I think the bare minimum should be to start with actually getting the services that the borough is legally responsible for providing, and working together to leverage over to the district, or to the borough, to say, "You sign an agreement every year to provide this, we would like you to provide it." Thank you.
You can only speak once per public comment section. There's another one at the end. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Herman, a teacher at the high school. I had a whole thing prepared tonight, but Rick kind of... Sorry, I'm a little tall. So I had a whole thing prepared tonight, and Rick pretty much said everything that I was going to say, so I'm going to scrap that. But I just want to kind of reiterate the fact that I work at the high school, and things have been consistently going downhill since last year. I brought this bamboo plant because last year, I won the Teacher of the Year Award for the high school, and this was what I received as my gift for winning Teacher of the Year, which I super appreciated. I tried really, really hard all year to keep this thing alive. I researched like bamboo, like how do you keep it alive, how do you feed it? But I feel like this is a really great metaphor for how the high school is going right now, because no matter how hard I try, no matter what we do as a staff, it's just not working. And I feel like a lot of people are frustrated with how things are going at this point, and it just sucks as somebody who cares so deeply about the community. I went through all the school systems myself. I went to Zay North, the middle school, the high school, and now I've come back to work here. So I really like value Collingswood, and I want to stay here and continue to stay here. But it's disheartening to see all of my colleagues resign or retire when I don't think that was how it was going to go. I don't think this was something that was on their minds. I don't think that they had a lot of intentions of leaving. But just based upon how this year has gone, that's just how we are at. And like Rick said, we're down 30 staff members at this point, and we're not that big of a school district. You know, it's not like we're a regional school district where 30 seems like an average. I don't think 30 is an average. So I just wanted, as somebody who's going to continue to stay here through next year, I just wanted to get up here and express my concerns on behalf of the people, the teachers that will be here next year, who are going to be expected to do more with less. Thank you.
All right, I think this is fine. I'll just hold it. I'll just hold it. Thank you. My name's Aiden DiMarco, 105 Congress Ave., Oakland. I just, I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I just planned on listening to everyone who came up and spoke. But Riley and I were student representatives in January, and we came and we presented the concerns that the district had, specifically teachers and students. And we read testimony that I think is very clear, that it aligns with what is being said tonight, and we begged you all to act fast. And I think that action wasn't enough, because clearly, we are seeing a lot of staff members leaving. And, you know, when we talk about, "This is a normal rate for staff members leaving," no. The staff members here are leaving because they are stressed. They don't want to leave their jobs. Okay? You have teachers that are going to other districts like Haddonfield. They should be staying here, and they want to, but they can't, because they're worried that their jobs are going to be next. And we have a district leadership that lacks the ability to perform their jobs. And I'm just frustrated, so I just want to come up here tonight and thank everyone for speaking, and I hope that things change soon. Thank you.
I'm a high school teacher here for 13 years, 11 of which were really good. Last couple, not so much so. I want to address the adults here and just ask you, please, it's been obvious over the last few years that you're really not listening to the adults in the room. Please listen to these students. Listen to them. That's the reason why we're here. None of us would be here if it wasn't for the students. What they say is the truth. Talk to them. Come talk to us. There's reasons why the climate in the school has gone the way it has. There are two real issues that I wanted to talk about. One, the student liaison officer. As some of the students here said over the past couple of meetings, people have come and talked out against an SRO and having an armed personnel in the school building. You can change the name, put earrings on the pig, it's still the same thing. Bringing an armed person into a school building with children is never a good idea. Please read the violence report and look at the statistics. It is proven fact that having an armed personnel in a school building will not only not reduce violence, it also often increases it because of the likelihood, people who come into buildings and do harm, often are looking for that kind of suicide by police. And they're looking for buildings that have that kind of person on board. People are not going to be comfortable. Students have told you right out, some of the students here have talked about the fact that we have marginalized communities, that in the past, their dealings with armed police officers have not always gone well, and a gun is not a soothing instrument. And to sort of compare it to a nurse, a school nurse, and using her instruments, I think is very insensitive and tone deaf. Then at the same time, we are losing so many people here, and we're here to serve these students, to give them, your children, the best possible education. And you're asking us to do more work with less personnel, less resources, and somehow perform the same miracles. We are turning out amazing young people here. How that's going to continue? Above my pay grade, but it is your pay grade. So please figure it out, because you're losing more people, and you're also going to lose students too, because parents are going to take their children out of the school. I live in Cherry Hill, and I have been proud to be associated with Collingswood for years. I've tried to sell people on this district, "Come work here. It was the place to be, Collingswood." Now it's the place that I don't want to tell people where I work, because when I tell people, they go, "Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry. We'll let you know if there's an opening at our school." That's not how this place should be. I want to be proud to be a Collingswood teacher again. I have been for 11 of the 13 years I'm here. Please make my 14th year something I can be proud of. Thank you.
My name is Katie Cunningham. I live at 108 Crestmont Terrace. I'm here to also talk about the teachers that are leaving our district. A big reason why my husband and I came back to this district is because of the school system. We thrived in this school district. Coming here and seeing teachers that taught me and have the potential to teach my children is something that not many people can say. I hear that you don't want, I see, because I've been here for the last year, coming to board meetings, you don't want to hear it from stupid student, I'm sorry, student representatives. We have teachers here saying they need help. How do you need the communication so this is not what we're talking about every single meeting? I'm scared. My kids are pre-K and kindergarten, that this is what my kids are coming into. I want to be a part of the solution. How do we need to communicate that we're all on the same page? Thank you.
Can you hear me? My name is William Lutz. My address is 728 Belmont Avenue. I've been where you've been. I never served in the Board of Education, but I did work in municipal government for 25-plus years. Ultimately, at the point in my career, I was a business administrator for a larger city. I've been where you are in terms of sitting and going for long hours. I remember going out of work at 11:30 at night. In some cases, people got very angry. Understandably so, the concern about taxes. And granted, municipal government's different than working as a board of education, but those can be interesting meetings too, I've seen. That being said, I think a couple of things to keep in mind. One thing I learned from a man I worked for, very prominent now, long since gone, state legislator, said to me when I was very young years ago, as a recently graduated from college student, "Listen to what's not being said. All of you here tonight, things are being said to you." I just want to point out something that I think is very important, I hope everybody in this room and you understand. Don't look at this as just a challenge. Look at it as an opportunity. You have here people who generally do care and are willing to help. So far, nobody's been rude, and that's a very good sign. In some cases, I've seen people throw things. I remember negotiating a police contract, and several coffee mugs were thrown at me. When they agreed to eventually, we agreed to a good contract for four years, a 2% increase over four years, .5, .5, .5, .5. And so my other colleagues would tell me, "How in the hell did you do that?" I listened to them. I gave them what they thought we needed, and they want to be a part of the community. I can go on other negotiation contracts. I think the biggest problem you have in some places, people just don't care. And when that happens, things fall apart fast. And all of you I can see here do care, and everybody else here can care also, because they do care. Union, public, employees. The trick is harder than it seems, though, trying to get people to come to the same table and talk. When I had meetings with people, the first thing I'd do is bring a chunk of coffee, literally, a chunk of coffee and donuts. Sounds stupid, simple. We start talking, get to know each other. Something I learned from some of my older friends, break bread, go for the process. Bottom line is, when you talk to people and you listen to them, and you have this opportunity here to make things better, I think they're more willing to give to what you think you should have, that should be necessary, and vice versa. Right now, Collingswood has a unique opportunity. We use elected officials, have staff, and the public want to help in any way we can. That being said, please consider that, because right now, the schools of Collingswood is the future of Collingswood. I have a daughter, two daughters here, one whom's looking in college, and because she's gone to college, and I say that because she's been contacting people already, and she's only a junior, because Collingswood has a good reputation. My younger daughter, same thing, because my younger one's a little unusual. She likes to learn herself, teach herself different languages, because she gets bored. You're going to find other students like that too, who have unique skills and abilities and want to be a part of something bigger. That being said, if you know you can contact and I can help in any way, any advice I can give you, fine. If not, fine. But that being said, I think you have opportunities here that can help make the situation better for all and cut through the nonsense. I thank you for your time and good luck. By the way, I always keep coffee in my desk still to this day. Thank you.
I did not plan on doing this. So I'm Adrian Earl. I live at 409 Comley Ave. in Collingswood. I also work at Collingswood Middle School. I'm one of the school counselors there. And I was going to say thank you to people like Rebecca and Jeff, who got up and inspired me, and now I'm not feeling that much, because I'm really nervous. But as a staff member, I don't ever really feel like this is my place to speak to the board, which doesn't make sense, right? And I also live in town, and I also went to Zine and went through Collingswood Middle School and High School, so that's really cool. So first, I did just want to say, speak for, speak for the middle school, because Ms. Katie, one of your questions from the presentation was about the numbers, and because I'm one of the counselors at the middle school and I do scheduling, I can tell you that we have 475 students currently at the middle school, and projected as far as Genesis numbers, to have 475 students again next year. So, because I was curious about that too, so I just thought that would be helpful. And I have two young children, one's in kindergarten at Sharp right now, and another one's going into pre-K next year. So I just have to reiterate that I am concerned. I love this town, I have multiple generations of my family before me here. I was really excited 12 years ago to come and work in the Collingswood schools and kind of come back home. My mom used to work in the schools. And I just am concerned with where things are going right now, mainly, like everyone else said, just the loss of staff. I agree, it certainly doesn't feel or seem normal at all. Like I said, I have my own kids, and I care about their futures, but I'm also a middle school counselor, and it's like all the middle school staff. I'm more immediately worried for my eighth graders, who've chosen their electives and their courses for next year, and I don't know if they're actually going to be able to take all the courses that they chose, because it seems like with the budgetary concerns and the staff leaving and positions potentially not being replaced, that we may lose more programs. One question that I have, I understand you can't just flat out answer it right now, but given that there may be other districts, or I know there are other districts, right, that received level funding across the state that might be comparable to us, I'm wondering, because I just, I feel like I don't have all of the information to fully understand why we're in this position that we're in now, and wondering if other districts who've also received level funding or are in the same position are having to reconcile their budget as much as we are. I just think that would be helpful information for us to have, if you have that information, to really understand why we are where we are right now. Okay, I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
My name's Mike Pelucci. I teach at the high school. I've been here, this is my 17th year. I also am a resident and a parent in town. I know most of you. I don't usually speak at the meetings either, and obviously, I support my colleagues who have spoken here tonight. I think like Rebecca, I straddle the line between being an employee of the district and a parent in the district. I think that gives those of us in this position a unique ear to kind of hear where the parents of our young kids are, in addition to our colleagues who have worked with students for many years. And I don't think it's any secret at this point that even the best-intentioned, most open-minded, most dedicated and committed families in our district are questioning whether or not they're going to send their kids to the high school. If we're being honest, a degree of that conversation has existed for a long time in this district. But to chalk this up as that same old discussion would be irresponsible. It has taken a different... It has taken a different form now, and it has really been ramped up. And we're hearing a lot about the problems, and I know that that's something that has been brought to your attention. Two things I would say. The first is, we hear a lot about data, and when we're talking about police officers, when we're talking about standardized testing, education, data is important. Doctors use data, teachers use data, professionals use data all the time, and it is important to look at the numbers and see where we are. In a town as small as ours, though, it's very important to remember that these conversations that we have with each other are data. Like, this is not a big district. Like, we're talking here, and then I'm going to see you all at, like, T-Ball and, like, you know, Fourth of July and getting ice cream. It's like The Simpsons around here, like, it's the same people and everything. So like, it's a small enough town, like, that's data. Like, when you're talking to a bunch of people, like, the blue shirts are data. All right? And even though Mr. Adams doesn't have his, like, it's data. You know, like, the blue shirt, like, that is data. So we have to take, sometimes we have to take these discussions out of the abstract and out of the academic, and understand that, all right, we've got a sense of what the lay of the land is here, you know, just from the people who have voiced their concern and spoken to us. The second thing that I want to say real quick is just, how do we fix this, given that we're not going to stumble upon a big pile of money anytime soon? And I think what we do to figure that out is to look at the past, and I've made this point to some of you in private or in separate meetings, where, you know, the thing that's helped Collingswood as a district weather some of the other storms that have come through education in the past, has been the cohesiveness of the staff and the unity among professionals in the district. And so what that means is that when you think of a district or an institution such as ours, if you think of it as a living, breathing thing, you got to ask yourself, we know what the big things are, but what keeps it running? What keeps it breathing? And what keeps it running are the relationships that are built. Those are the connective tissue that keep this thing alive. And they're not big-ticket items, those are not things that you can really put in number form, but they're the reason why people care so much, and they're the reason why people have sent their kids here and really dedicated themselves to this district. Other surrounding districts have always paid more than us. That's not anything new, and yet people stayed. And so I think you can actually, this is not just, like, feel-good stuff, it's dollars and cents. And I believe, Ms. Coleman, you know, I said that to you in a meeting, you know, these things, these relationships, when you build them and you form them and you increase and improve the culture of your building, you're not only making a more positive work environment, you are saving dollars and cents, because you don't have to train a new teacher, you're gaining the expertise of people that want to stay here, and quite frankly, it's just a better environment. And when the environment is healthy, you cannot convince me that students don't learn better in that environment. I think all of us will understand that, and we all get along. There's not many of us who are like, "Oh, my God, that guy." Like, we, so we do get along with one another, and I want to just point out, the way we treat each other, the way that our leadership and staff have a relationship with one another, those things are important. So I'd like everyone to keep that in mind going forward. That's really what we need to pay attention to. Thanks.
Thank you to everyone that spoke. That was a lot of information, and we appreciate all of it. I did want to just make two clarifying points as I was listening to everyone. Mr. Rossi made a great point about us needing to definitely clarify the role of, or what this partnership looks like, and also, I want to clarify what I said during Committee of the Whole, which was, which may have led people to believe that once we create this job description, we are completely hands-off. That is 150% not the case. What I meant by that was, the job description gets created, and then it is on the Police Department to hire that person. District employees, board members would be involved in that, but it, we don't have police officers, they do. So that's where that comes from. But then, guardrails and accountability measures and checking in on a very regular basis are all part of the plan. We are 100% committed to keeping our eyes on this and ensuring that it doesn't become something that the board is not comfortable with, and we have heard, the students especially, and some community members and some staff also making it clear what they are comfortable or not comfortable with as well. So I wanted to clarify that point, as well as, in the group of resignations that have happened, just to be clear, there is no intention of, for instance, not having a Spanish program. I understand hiring is a whole different animal, but all of the resignations that you see doesn't mean that those positions aren't being filled or those programs aren't being filled, that there is a full intention to have those same sorts of programs. I understand that it is also about hiring the people. Okay. All of that being said, we're going to move on to Section 6, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig will present.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Today, the only thing on the agenda that we are approving is the recommendation on the budget, on the budget adjustments from what was sent to the state, as it are outlined here, so seeking approval for item 6.4. 6.02.
Motion to approve said item.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have a question then. So, Ms. Caden, you said that, just connecting to the budget here, that the resignations do not indicate that those positions are not going to be refilled, correct? Okay.
There's a document for your reference under the Buildings and Grounds section that Ms. Coleman put together that makes it very clear what, there are a couple of positions that won't be refilled, but the majority of the resignations does not mean that those positions aren't being refilled. It means that those people resigned, but not that those positions are being eliminated.
Yes, thank you. I did see that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Before I take the roll call, I just want to explain where everybody's looking at, because if you've been to a public hearing on a budget before, you're like, "What the heck is in this agenda?" It normally doesn't look like this, but the State of New Jersey and the Camden County Office, there's a, they just wanted a difference to share. Because we changed the budget from what they approved, so we sent our tentative budget in March, and the state approved it, so since we changed what they approved, they want a line-by-line detail of everything that changed between the tentative budget in March and the one that you're adopting tonight. So that's why this agenda item looks much stranger than they normally look like. So I just kind of wanted to explain that to the public, because we normally don't go into that much detail with, you know, pluses and minuses and negatives and what things are. But I actually had to have, I had to submit a 20-page Excel spreadsheet to the county office with all the budget lines, and then the board resolution, I had to, like, do a synopsis of it. So, yeah, so I just kind of wanted to explain why that looks so different. And I'll take roll. Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Docus?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 7, Curriculum Committee. Mr. Chu will present.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. For item 7.02, that's a district placement for a student, and then 7.03 are a couple of high school field trips, one to the Barnes Foundation for ninth and 10th grade, and then one to Rowan University. So I am seeking approval for items 7.02 and 7.03.
Motion to approve said items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Docus?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 8, the Personnel Committee. I will be attempting to present for Ms. Sheridan-Celia. Bear with me, this one's a bit long. The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Items 8.02 to 8.04 are retirements. 8.05 to 8.09 are resignations. Item 8.10 is approving the administrative transfer of Mr. Newman from Sharp Elementary School to the high school effective July 1st. 8.11 and 8.12 are inter-district transfers. 8.13 is a revised FMLA for an employee. 8.14 is the hiring of a high school chemistry teacher. And here's where it gets a little more complicated. 8.15 to 8.17 is the renewal of teaching staff, tenured, non-tenured, and instructional assistants for preschool through grade 5. 8.18 and 8.19 are the grade 6 through grade 8 teaching staff, tenured and non-tenured. 8.20 to 8.21 are the high school and district staff, tenured and non-tenured. 8.22 to 8.25 are the hiring of instructional assistants from preschool all the way through high school and including within the district. 8.26 to 8.34 are all of the office and service personnel, both 10-month and 12-month positions, tenured and non-tenured, for pre-K through high school. 8.35 through 8.38 are all of the administrative staff in our district, tenured and non-tenured. And, sorry, just making sure I get it right. Now, we're on to 8.39 is the approval of all of the building service employees for next school year. 8.40 and 8.41 are the approval of the contracts for our two assistant superintendents. For Ms. McPartland, it is one for, there's the remainder of her time that she will be with us. 8.42, the listing of the unaligned staff for next school year. 8.43, the social work, two extra social work or additional social work interns, one at Sharp Elementary and one at Garfield Elementary for next school year. 8.44 are some annual stipends. 8.45 are summer hours for 10-month secretaries. Actually, 8.45 and 8.46 are summer hours for 10-month secretaries at various levels. 8.47 are the summer buildings and grounds workers. 8.48 are the summer district vehicle drivers. And 8.49 is the recognition of our retiring faculty and staff, and we have quite a list. Ms. Radwansky has been with us for 40 years, which is quite an incredible feat. Nancy Walker for 13 years, Grace Menino, 35 years, Cynthia Evans, 25 years, Suzette Walsh, 29 years, Neil King, 29 years, Carolyn Janko, 34 years, and Mary Egan, 22 years. We thank them very much for their service to our school district. So with that, I am asking for approval for items 8.02 to 8.49 this evening. I need a motion. Forgot I have to say that for you.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I do have a comment. I feel like one of us needs to say something and just thank everyone for coming tonight and speaking up. I, I'm Collingswood person. I've been here a long time. It's heartbreaking. It's sad that people are giving up their tenure and everything that they've worked so hard for to leave here. And I'm not saying that that's a result of any of us here. I mean, I just got here, that's one of the reasons why I ran, because I care so much about this town, that I've been here so long. I'm raising my kids here. I have one kid that started here in ninth grade and she left. She didn't want to be here anymore. I'm sorry I'm getting so worked up, but I want to say that I'm committed to solving this problem, whatever that means, and I hope that we can get a commitment from every one of us sitting here tonight, that we are committed to making this better, because it's really important that we hold this together. And Mike is right, relationships are the connective tissue here. And if we don't have that, and we're not building that, we have nowhere to go. We're hitting rock bottom. I guess the only way to go from there is up, but we got to make some changes, we got to do something, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I do have a question about the document that Dr. McMullin said that he submitted to the board. Where would I be able to find that?
From the-
The joint statement?
The board office.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mr. Docus?
Yes, except where I'm required to abstain.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 9 is our final opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to give any public comment that you may wish. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all complaints and concerns should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. I think everyone here has heard what I have said before, so we're going to move on to, in fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict five-minute time limit per person during public comment. We will be listening, and please remember to state your name and address for the record.
I am Sue Ellen Rabi. I left out my address last time, 719 Center Street. I would just strongly advise all of you and all of the staff to take conflict resolution training. We've got the American Friends Service Committee across the river. There, I don't know why it's not a freshman orientation subject. I was raised during the Vietnam era. I lived with Movement for a New Society. We dealt with nonviolent direct action. Please, let's take a lesson from Gandhi here.
Okay, so I'm Lucille DeYoung, and I live at 550 Grand Avenue, and this was later in the 3 that I was just too flustered to get to. The school liaison officer, that scares me, and I'm an adult. I can't even imagine what the kids are going to be dealing with. It really frightens me that we're talking about an educational environment where we have to put a gun. I heard you say they're not going to be, this person will not have any face time with the kids, the children. Why do we need a gun? I mean, if it's a person that's there to assist the administration and the staff, what happened to just communication, sharing, data, anything? Why a gun? I don't under, scares me half to death. And I live here, I live very close to the schools. I know all the stuff that went on in the cafeteria and all that, and that scared me too, but not a gun. That's not the answer. I don't know what the answer is. There's obviously a lot of problems here, but a gun is not an answer. You're talking about kids. What are you telling them? Violence is cool? What? What are you telling them? That's the only, that's the only way out is a gun? I don't, it really scares me. Thank you.
Hi, Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. Yeah, I hear a lot about, and I think, you know, the question that I still haven't heard the answer to with the school liaison officer is why this wouldn't be a civilian, why a- why a civilian administrator wouldn't be able to fulfill the role that's needed, why we are looking at a cop to do it, essentially. And I think that there's some disconnect there. I also just want to say that, like, as I hear all the things about the retention and about, about the budget problems, you know, I think back to, you know, a few months ago, we had the town hall with the students who had led the walkout. And, you know, remembering, you know, I think that this is an opportunity also to build that more diverse, that more diverse faculty that the students have really established that they want. So I hope that something good can come out of this unfortunate wave of resignations. And I would ask that it be that, essentially, that the board do whatever it can to make it be that. And that, you know, this is, you know, something that I think is an ongoing and long-term commitment to racial justice that I personally plan on bugging you guys as long as I'm around to keep, you know, seeing through, because I think it's really an important thing. So thank you.
That concludes this special meeting of the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you to everyone for coming and sharing their thoughts and concerns with us. Have a good evening.